Invocation will be by Ms. Joyce and the pledge will be led by Alice. Please stand.
Father God, thank you for this awesome day today. Thank you for bringing us together. Give us the wisdom and the patience to do the work of Buckingham County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the quorum. We have seven in person and one on video. Are you there, Dabney?
Yes.
We have eight of eight. Do we have a quorum? Adoption of the agenda.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Approval of minutes. January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, joint public hearing. Move to approve as presented.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. Any discussions? Let's vote. Raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Chairman Bo, may I just interrupt? Don't forget, um, Dabney, he's on the line.
Dabney.
Would you like to vote on that? Approval of minutes? Dabney?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of, uh, January twenty-fifth minutes. Don't move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Dabney?
Yes.
Unanimous. Public comment.
You want her to read that paper now before public?
Want to go ahead and read that?
Sir, the planning, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Planning Commission would like to remind all speakers that they have a First Amendment right to speak. However, speakers do not have indemnification if the statements are made with actual or constructive knowledge that they are false, or with reckless disregard for whether they are false. We ask all speakers to keep to what they know to be the truth, and by signing up for comment, you are acknowledging your understanding and agreement with the above. Mr. Chairman, we actually do not have anyone signed up for public comment tonight.
Thank you. New business.
Yes, sir. Tonight, the one item of new business that we have is the introduction of Case twenty-one, SUP two-eighty-two. Our landowner is Stephen Wicks, and he resides at fifty-five thirty-two Summer Crescent, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two-three-four-six-two. And our applicant is John M. Wicks of fifty-three fifty Cove Garden Road in Coesville, Virginia, two-two-nine-three-one. The property information consists of Tax Map eighty-forty, which contains as a whole property seventy-four point eight-five acres. The site for this business, for the SUP request, will consist of one point zero-six acres, and it's located at twenty-four fifty-one Banton Shop Road, which is State Route six-seventeen. It's currently zoned A-one, and the request tonight is to apply for a special use permit to operate a custom woodworking shop as a small business for custom and heirloom furniture. Mr. Wicks is asking the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for this request. Uh, once again, the zoning ordinance does not permit custom woodworking shops as a by right permitted use. However, within an A-one agricultural zoning district, custom woodworking shops may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance in the Code of Virginia. The Planning Commission may recommend, and the board may impose conditions, to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Mr. Wicks has indicated in his written narrative that he wishes to open a small self-contained woodworking shop or studio in order to create unique custom and artistic sets of furniture. He anticipates being a one-person operating shop not to exceed a three-person operation. Mr. Wicks does not expect more than ten customers and visitors per month for low-volume impact to the traffic in the area. Mr. Wicks has no plans to construct housing on the one point zero-six acre site for the woodworking shop. I have listed ten conditions that are a suggestion, things that you may consider. Our landowner and applicant are with us tonight in the audience. I would like to add that, um, Mr. Wicks, John Wicks, who's our applicant, does have, um, some slides that he'd like to show, um, that consist of the furniture that he, he produces in his woodworking shop.
You want to step up, Mr. Wicks?
If yours is a simple dozen or so, uh, photos that I have. It'd be a good general idea.
Dabney?
There we are. He's caught on a small loop for some reason. Well, I can just simply show you, I guess, through a more manual process, but, uh... Uh, suffice to say that what I'm aiming to do is to, yeah, the realm of, uh, custom and artistic, shall we say, is doing entire sets of furniture, as to be sold as a whole, nothing to be mass-produced. Usually, everything should be, in essence, a one-off, as in, nothing will be really repeated. And so, this is an example of one set, shall we say, and upon which I've also reupholstered the furniture as well, to go along, yeah, to match a certain theme. And, uh, I'm planning on using a combination of domestic woods, which Buckingham is quite sufficient with, and it's along with, uh, accents of slight exotic woods, such as in this case, you can see with the yellow, that is a wood called Yellow Heart, and some of this joinery as well around here, and it's woods called Wingay. This would be another example of, in this case, of the beginnings of a bedroom set, and again, using domestic woods and then using exotics and such for the highlights. And also showing, you know, just, I guess you'd say, uh, the ability of such of doing carving and the like, which is just something I find that you don't often quite find in most furniture, um, stores or anything else. So, trying to provide a simple, um, outlet that, uh, most places don't really have for fine furniture. Do you have any questions initially?
Mr. Wicks, do you have, uh, specific orders, or do you just, in other words, what generates your ideas here? As far as your wood, uh...
What generates my ideas?
Yeah.
Uh, usually, it is taking, uh, in, for instance, the case of, uh, something along the lines of this, is I have traveled extensively, and so this is a combination of many cultures that I've been around. Um, for instance, the headboard has a combination of Maori or New Zealand woodworking. Um, if I can zoom in here, uh, you can't quite see it, although this headboard has a very traditional Maori, uh, version. Also, the Pacific Northwest with, for instance, the, the posts, you know, which does the, yeah, such. And so, the general, um, in this particular case, is pulling off the central picture here by an artist named Judge Jackson, upon which, yeah, I've also actually ended up creating those lights and everything else to go along with it as well. Does that answer your question there?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. I would just ask it for, in the future, if, uh, if you do get approved, how you, would someone be able to contact you and ask specifically? Eddie Markie. Yeah.
So, basically, I would, uh, do a few things, which is, one, you are more than welcome to come to the shop itself. And then also, I plan on using a lot of social media as well, such as Etsy, um, Instagram, the, the full bracket, Facebook, and basically making myself available to pretty much anyone within the country. Uh, well, I would say lower forty-eight, you know, upon which they can purchase anything.
I have a question. You mentioned reupholstering?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be woodworking. Are you going to be reupholstering furniture there also?
Uh, not as a main.
Not as a main, okay.
But I more than easily have the capabilities of doing so. Uh, the reason I more so mention reupholstering is because furniture I make can be upholstered as well. Uh, the, both the equipment and ability to make upholstered equipment as well as just fine woodworking. Does that answer your question there?
That does. And the furniture designs are whatever you see in the wood, is that?
I guess you could call that, yes. It's just, you know, uh, I have a vivid imagination sometimes.
Okay.
Going to kind of go in and playing sometimes. It's kind of the fun part.
I have a question. Uh, for your shop, would you require any special electrical needs far as three-phase, or do you operate on single-phase?
I have, considering that, I went ahead and have set everything up to be able to work off single-phase.
Okay.
So, no, no electrical needs that are above and beyond what is normal.
I wondered, though, would you have any large equipment, you know, that you may need three-phase, but...
I, I, again, the equipment I've chosen, I specifically considered the question of single versus three-phase, and I have chosen out equipment that is, while large equipment, again, functions off single-phase.
Thank you.
Wicks, do you make your, your finish?
Um...
How's to make that, because these pieces are absolutely gorgeous.
Thank you.
But they're, they're not colors that I have seen.
So, these finishes are actually just clear finishes. They're primary tung oil with a little bit of, uh, poly. And so, I sometimes use the, uh, a, a brand named Waterlox, which is very good in that, and it doesn't really affect color or anything else. And a lot of these colors are actually the natural colors of the wood. That's kind of the fun part. I have not stained anything that you've seen.
Okay. Wow.
Yeah, that's just kind of, to give you an idea, an easy example is, uh, which is why included, which is this one here, upon which you can see, you know, green, pink, purple, a full range of colors.
Right.
That's kind of the neat thing I think about, you know, some of these woods, is that we can easily preserve that, and you don't have to do anything such as stains.
So, you mentioned people coming, being welcome to come to your shop. Do you envision having a showroom of some sort, or just kind of what's under production at the time?
So, what I've more so set up is I have set a corner of my shop aside in order to stage. But, uh, as for a showroom, no, not at this point in time. Um, maybe if I'm wildly successful or something, then I might build an auxiliary building for a showroom. But, uh, suffice to say, considering that I'm aiming to make most of my products available both online and such, is, you know, is just having a main area upon which to display for photo purposes and the like, so.
So, you don't see a need for extensive parking lot, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Like, honestly, I, what I've kind of, uh, gone ahead and sketched out is just simply something that could fit maybe up to three cars for. So, no, nothing that is, like, so this is meant to be small, and I don't want it to be large.
Okay. And you don't have big delivery trucks that come, or?
No, like, uh, the equipment has already been delivered, which was the extent of our delivery, and that was just to the end of the driveway, and that was just moving in some of the larger pieces of equipment. So, no, there won't be any delivery trucks beyond the occasional, maybe if I buy a larger bulk of wood, um, at a wholesale price, then, but also within this, uh, I've gone ahead and ordered out a mill and the like, so hopefully I can make most of the stuff I need on my own. And as I've kind of made in my statement, you know, just trying to make everything self-contained.
Uh-huh. So, so, if I was in another state and I purchased from you, how would I get that piece?
I would bring it to you myself.
Oh, okay, okay. So, you deliver?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about big trucks?
No.
Turning around and loading it up. Okay, cool.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more questions from the commission, I'm gonna make a motion. We move this forward to the Board of Supervise.
I'd like to second that.
Yeah. Yeah, jumped it down there, sorry.
I'd like to second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Dabney?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, you will go before them on, I'll give the date here, Nikki.
It's actually a public hearing for the Planning Commission on March twenty-second at seven P.M.
Need a public hearing at that time.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Whole business, there is no reports.
In your packet, you have your building permits report for informational purposes, and as far as the zoning administrative report, I do not have anything, um, new, uh, to bring up at this time.
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in Curridgeville, Energix...
Mm-hmm.
Is building a seventeen million dollar building. What, what, what is that all about?
That's a solar farm.
Oh, okay.
That just, uh, commenced construction six to eight weeks ago.
Okay. That's the one down on sixty?
Mm-hmm. That's Buckingham Two Solar that SUP was approved in twenty-seventeen. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, mission matters. Mr. Chairman. Yes. It's my understanding, we've had a few discussions in regards to maybe some modifications to our, uh, public speaking time, and it's my understanding from talking to you that Mr. Wright was gonna research and give us some possibilities of, uh, things that we perhaps could adopt.
Mr. Wright, I actually brought up with him, uh, two to three weeks ago, um, at the, um, when this matter was brought to our attention, and apparently there may be more than one avenue as far as I know that the question was to reduce the amount of speaking time allowed, or was it to move the public comment from the beginning of the agenda to the end of the agenda, Mr. Wright?
The only conversation I've had about this topic was a very informal constant conversation with the Planner's Zone. I am not aware of that request, and I apologize to you. Okay, well, the thought is, anytime that there's ten or more speakers signed up, or a conglomerate of ten, in other words, six in person, two with email, and four with telephone, anytime there's ten or more, the podium time would be reduced to one minute. Is there any problem with that? A problem is a very, very word. I'm assuming what you're asking me, is there any legal problem with that? Yes. Uh, I don't know the answer to that. It needs to allow enough time for fair discussion and otherwise, but, uh, so, as I say, I've not spent any time other than a very informal conversation on when you maybe want to do it, at the beginning of the meeting, the end of the meeting, those types of things. I don't have a definitive answer for you, so I would ask for a little leave to, uh, do a little bit of a work on it and make sure that I give you sound advice. Okay. Any of the commission have anything to say about that, thought-wise? Well, I'd like to say, uh, the intentions, or at least in my thinking, is not to, uh, squash public discourse and discussion, it's just to make utilization of the time more efficient. And, and that's what, you know, I sort of look, I could see a need for that, uh, so you don't, you, your time is more effectively used by discussing the facts. Uh, and it may just encourage, if you cut the time back, I was thinking about this after we discussed the past, that it might encourage more groups to form. In other words, they've got five minutes, I believe, is that right? If I recall.
Yeah, five minutes.
No, everybody had three.
Yeah, right now.
Unless you have a group.
But if you're a representative of a group.
Representative of a group.
Yeah, you get five minutes.
Five minutes.
I, I could see that would be a, a more efficient way, I think, in some cases, to use the time as have a spokesman for a group, so they can discuss, you know, that way they can list it, they got a little bit more time, and they can hit all the points that they want to versus ten people trying to hit those points and maybe, uh, being redundant because they don't know what the other person's gonna say. So, uh, that, that's sort of my train of thought, and I'm, I'm just, that's just my opinion, so.
And my thought on that would be, having done public comments, I come in, I practice my three minutes to get everything in, and to come in and not know whether I would have three minutes or a minute is gonna cause me some anxiety, because, you know, it just depends on who's showing up. And then I've got to edit down something that I've, I, I usually carefully work on what I am going to say.
All right.
Um, and, uh, having read the packet that we had, and I looked at the configurations of people take saying the same thing over and over again, um, you kind of look at it, and so, I think keeping it at three minutes is important, and because I don't want someone to come in, I know how I would feel if I came in and it says, "Well, you got three minutes." No, you got one. And I've worked and practiced on what I've had to say.
Another way to look at this, historically, with other controversial issues that, um, during times of public hearing or public comment, what has the county done to address a large number of, um, citizens or constituents making those comments? Have we said in excess of, or we anticipate a large volume, and we're gonna give thirty days notice at one meeting for the other one so that people would be prepared? What has typically been done in the past?
Again, if memory serves correct, the last time we had a big group, it was, it was already decided that groups would have three minutes and individuals three. Um, somebody please look into that, because...
Well, this would probably require a change to our bylaws.
Bylaws.
But I don't personally, I, I'm kind of like Joyce. I don't feel like you could unpack your thoughts in a minute. And I don't, I don't feel like that that would be fair. And I understand, you know, that the one group that gets everybody roused up, and they bring twenty people, and all of them's got three minutes, you know? I understand that, but I don't feel like it would be fair for the average Joe to get penalized because of a group that has done that. I think we have to be very careful how we tread on that.
And I agree with that also, because thinking of the group that usually takes a lot of time and have many speakers, all they're gonna do is reorganize and figure a way around it.
Yeah, and I think that's why we went with three and three.
Okay.
For the group and the individual.
There'll be some other way to do it, because in the minutes, there were individual speakers, and then there was a video, but the video contained people who had already spoken.
Sure did.
So...
And that may be where we need to address. You know, if you're a speaker, you have three minutes. If you're a presenter, then that's a whole different category. And, and I feel like if you do a video, then you're a presenter.
Yeah, presentation, most time, is totally different.
Yeah.
There is no time on it. You just get up and do what you do.
Right. But if, if you're gonna present, you need to be on the, on the docket like Mr. Wicks. Wicks? Wicks? Was.
I think that's for special causes, not just...
Right.
Thinking back to the last meeting when we had a lot of comments, you know, for the voicemails, we were able to cut them off at three minutes, right? But how do we enforce that with written emails or letters?
So, the email could look at those guidelines and the agenda. It will let you know that we cut it off at five hundred words, I believe, is what the emails, I think it's included here, or it may not be, but, um, the three minutes will be stopped after the voicemail is played, and it's the, um, email comments, here they are. Number two, uh, please limit word count to five hundred words.
Does that equate, I mean, roughly reading it?
That's roughly reading it at, um, a normal speed. Be approximately three minutes.
I think reading something in one minute might be pretty difficult.
But it's really gonna limit anyone's time to pull their thoughts together, 'cause it takes a few seconds to say, "Hello, I am..."
Right.
"...A.B.C. from this particular district, and I'm here tonight to speak." I mean, that's gonna take them anywhere from ten to twenty seconds. Um, right. I mean, and how do we determine that ten is, is the number? I mean, you know, we, we do want to encourage our citizens to participate in this process.
I'm like thirty minutes, so what do you?
Well, public...
Are you gonna go back to an hour, or?
If it, you know, if it was just thirty minutes, it wouldn't be a problem. But there's been nights we've sat up here for two hours, here in the same thing over and over and over.
Right.
Or maybe it's sort of timing on an hour, then... Well, maybe it's set a time in, uh, an hour, and then pop the public comments, and then maybe they can come back out later and bust the people. I don't know. I'm wondering whether we're cutting to three minutes more than it would, or cutting to time. Uh, say, hour of co- public comments, and then it's over.
That could work.
Anyway, people still get to speak to three minutes. Um, so they get to that hour, and then you're gonna shut down everybody else.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a problem and an issue too, but do you wait until after the meeting's gone further? At the end of the meeting and let them come back and talk again? I don't know what you do. But, you know, you don't want to cut everybody off.
Well, it could be that, that we move the business to the front end and the comments to the...
Back end.
Back end. That a way, people who actually have business are not sitting and listening to the same people talk and talk and talk.
But mostly, your public comments are false stuff that we're gonna be doing, so.
Well...
We'll be already finished by the time we get ready to speak.
If they, if, if it has a public comment section for that case, then that is something that they don't need to bring into the public comment. You know, because we have the, the public comment for that section.
Come on, a public hearing.
Public hearing, mm-hmm.
Then anybody speaks, then.
Right.
We've been having a lot of people that's not in Buckingham speaking.
Right.
But that's, that's part of the, um, it's okay. Only on public comment can you keep just people in the county, but after you get out of the public comment, it's public hearing, you can have anybody.
Right. Perhaps we could look to that.
Like, why not take all your ideas and kind of put them together, and then after an X amount of time, let's say an hour, then it goes from three minutes to one minute. And so, therefore, you can still have everybody put it, but you can also start turning off time.
That's a suggestion, but the problem you'll run into is if you have enough people. It's just like Ms. Joyce indicated, and they've practiced for three minutes, and they're the last ones to sign up, then they only got a minute, and they have to, you know, change all that they, you know, try to shorten up their, their talk and hit only the high ones. I could see that not being, I, I, it's a great, uh, good suggestion, but I could see the problem with it, because if you have enough people, somebody's gonna have to, only gonna have a minute, and they prepare for three.
I think we need to be very careful in our wording too, because I'm looking down here, we refer to, um, presentation. And this was the video. It was considered a presentation. And, uh, so just, if we're careful in our wording, and we, we call it, it's not a public comment, it's a presentation. Uh, and then I know when people are signing up for public comment, there are people who want to wait till, to be the last one so they can comment on everybody else's comment. I've seen that happen. Uh, so there are a whole lot of games that are, game strategies, I'm sorry, that are used when people sign up for a public comment too. And we just need to be careful, but I remember the, the one when we had the hunting, hunting, gun-owning community coming in. And this place was literally packed, you know, from here out.
Yeah.
And everybody wanted to talk.
But I think we have to be very careful that we don't step on, you know, the amendment rights.
Right, absolutely.
And the, and the, you know, the democracy of our country. It's already been treaded on lots of other places. We don't want to be guilty of that, even if we have to stay, you know, later. They already think we don't listen to them, especially that group. So, if someone will look back and make sure that, 'cause I, I remember the last time this came up, that we, we addressed the groups for three minutes and the individuals for three also. So, if somebody will look back into that, I would appreciate it.
I'll, I'll do that, Alice.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. I appreciate that.
And now that Mr. Wright ma- probably has a better handle on where this discussion is going in more of a formal manner, he and I can get together if it's agreeable.
Specifically, what is it you want to know from me legally?
It's three minutes cast in stone.
Okay. That we can tell you when the time comes, after a little work.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more discussion on that.
Looking for an adjourn, uh, motion to adjourn.
Remove.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Abney? Still with us, Abney? We've got seven out of eight. That's enough.
He said yeah.
Adjourned.
He said yeah.
Okay. Thank you.